Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting February night 2016. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Trustee Delhay has some work issues today, so she will not be joining us. And trustee Haptez agreed to be the secretary of record today. So if anyone would like public comment, Mr. Hap will flag you when your three minutes are close to being done. Is there any public comment? Okay, no one wants a challenge, Mr. Hap? Administration?
Just a couple of quick updates. One, tonight, the Southwest Washmont Consortium is hosting their annual open house inviting students interested in their programs from around the county and also our rising eighth graders that happen to open house at high schools. We're excited to get, really start to turn that focus as we hit February, focus really turns now to the 16, 17 school years. We're excited about that opportunity. We also had an event today, and I want to thank Jody Golinski and Tim Tomasek for hosting. Representative Walberg, along with representatives from several local businesses, were able to talk a little bit about what are the needs for the workforce and workforce development, what role does a K-12 institution like Selenor Schools and like the consortium play in terms of supplying skilled labor moving forward? And all of them indicated some of the gaps that they're seeing right now. So it's a positive sign that they're in need of hiring, and it's something that we need to consider relative to making sure we have students prepared to fill those jobs. That's all I have.
Okay, board members?
I want to thank Patty, I guess, for an awesome School of Rock this year.
Oh, yeah. Good point.
We had Schools of Rock, Snow Blast.
That was good.
Empty holes, all in the space of two weeks, all good fun.
Well attended event.
Well attended, very well attended, and fun event. Tomorrow is Count Day. No snow day, for sure.
I can guarantee you that.
Please show up for Count Day. And I would like to just call out Stephen Jessina, who scored a perfect score on his AP Calculus B, C test. Only one of 11 people in the entire world that took the test that got a perfect score, so I...
Over 100,000 tests given.
100,000 tests, so we're, I know he's done a lot of stuff with math, other awards, so look forward to him at MIT or someplace like that, or they don't use calculators yet. There is also a Destination Imagination spaghetti dinner next Saturday, the 20th, at 6:30. If you need more information about that, I think it was in the news and notes this week, so it's a good event, a good organization. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
Move.
Support. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Hearing non-motion carries 6-0. Scheduled reports, we have a presentation tonight on cyber safety that the Board has not seen, I think, is a middle school, that the program, yep?
Just called David Raff. Many of you remember at the board retreat, we talked a little bit about the issue of cyber safety and issues around students texting and some of those things. And so one of the questions came up is what are we doing as a school district, particularly at the middle school level, which is where we find this issue to be most prevalent? And inviting Mr. Raff here tonight to talk a little bit about what the Selen middle school does, and as well as just giving an overview of the issue.
Yeah, well, thank you for having me here tonight. I'd be remiss not to mention that Heather Kelstrom, who is here somewhere, our director of technology, is really the focal point to a lot of what we do as educating our students from basically K-12 levels completely. So I put together a little quick slideshow, out of information that I've received in the past and we share with our students a lot. There's just some basic facts that are, that are pretty amazing. I look around, how many people here have children? How many high school students have a phone on them during class pretty much every day? Eight years ago, when I was at the middle school, when many of them were there, we were probably, Mr. Raff was pretty hard on kids with cell phones. We were watching for them, we were looking for them, we were actually telling teachers, take them away, find them and take them. Today, we have, we have the policy that we let students carry their cell phones in school. Sorry, you guys didn't have that opportunity then, but we do. Let students have a cellphone, we let them use it in the hallway, we let them use it in the lunchroom. We basically decided that this is an issue that we have to not fight anymore because it is part of our lives, is more important to educate our students as much as we can. Some of the numbers that are up there, we've got 30% of our students, girls online reported being bullied compared with 26% of online boys. We'll talk a little bit more about the other numbers. Over 40% of our teens with internet access have reported being bullied online, and 58% of have not told their parents or adult. We find a lot of, that's 58% of the middle school, is where our concern is, and a lot of times, it's based on the fact that the students are scared to bring up to us, or they're scared they're going to lose their device, or their parents could be upset that they're on there, or there's actually bullying going on both sides of the realm. There's just so much that's out there that our students are aware of, they're using and to kind of guide them in a negative way, they don't use it, you know, in a responsible way. So we have a couple definitions, and for you guys, it's in your packet to take a look at. Our bigger, our bigger issue is that usually the cyber bullying isn't happening in schools, it's happening outside of school. However, it gets carried back into school the next day. So we, I know at the middle school, deal with it almost daily in a situation that has been brought to us from a parent, or a child, or somebody, that something happened at night that was mean. There was a time when we all went to school, and we had had bullies, but when we went home, the bully was gone, at least for that, that night. And we wouldn't have to worry about him till the next day. They go home at night, and it would be mean things happening to those students, and they're living with it all the time because it doesn't stop in school, it's stopped, it continues, and it sometimes gets worse when they go home. So, I mean, we have so many, and that's one of the things that we try to work with our parents, we keep talking about having our parents more involved, understanding what our children do. And I know as a parent myself, that I probably am not very good at monitoring the technology used by my children, as that probably I shouldn't be. One of the things that we have noticed is the risk in sexting behaviors with social media, and there's so, and I can't even, I probably had the high school students come up and tell me about some of these apps, but there's a lot of apps up here that are there for a short period of time, and sexting has become something, when we say sexting, it's a lot more of taking pictures of each other, kids asking for, like, you know, their girls or boys to send pics of themselves, naked pics, and we deal with that quite a bit at the middle school. And it's one of the things that we, trying to get a control over, gasp, grasp on, but it's more of the education piece of it, again. So really, our focus at the middle school, and the head of the technology department, is to educate, educate, educate. And that means not only the students, but our parents. And one of the things that we try to do is we start off every year with our students signing, and parents signing a technology AUP form, which is, has been required, and I'm, I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but not every school district does that, right?
No, some schools only do it once in a child's full 12 years. We update ours and make them sign every year, and we're responsible for it.
And we really do go and talk with our students about that, so we let them know how important it is that they uphold what's in this contract that they're signing. We have our classroom teachers who educate prior to their use, because we, that is one of the risks when we went to bring your own devices and letting students use in the classroom, is the teacher to worry what they're doing, because there's some downtime, and their students had the opportunity to get on and search things. We have a pretty good security system that catches a lot of things that are, that are not appropriate, but in the same sense, we're kids, we're exploring, and things do happen. PDIS, our Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports Committee and Team is, you know, our philosophy at the middle school, be respectful, be responsive, kind of necessary, so we try to always reiterate that with our students. We have Washmont Area Council for Children presentations for our sixth and seventh graders in the fall. They go into the classrooms and work with each class as eighth graders, and they talk a lot about the dangers, they share real life stories that are going on in our county and our state, they talk about the dangers of online cyber bullying and sexting. We do a lot of public service announcements, and our morning announcements, our web students who are eighth graders go in and talk with our sixth graders about education and making smart decisions. We have a number of social groups that we run with our counselors and social works. And then we do have our mid-year review of our handbook, which we just had about two weeks ago to talk about some issues. They always forget, they're middle schoolers, so they're not going to forget certain things, or they're going to need to be reminded on some, on certain things. One of the areas that I know Heather worked with quite a bit is offering parent classes. We can offer a cyber bullying class for parents and have seven people show up, but, you know, you have, you don't have the crowd you really would like to have and talk about. The educating of parents is something we continue to work on and continue to get the information out to them. That's pretty much what we do here at the middle school, I was told to keep it short and sweet, so I tried to. These are some resources. Heather just shared with us her update right here, this is one you can click on or go into our website. They've updated their, our school district cyber safety information, it has a lot of good information, but these other pieces are pretty important pieces that we, that we send out to our parents to kind of share some guides on how to monitor. Yeah?
Just a quick question, because times have changed, are there phones at Heritage School too, as far as students?
I'm not sure about that, but I'm not sure...
Yeah, phones, there's three phones.
They can use them?
The cell phone policy, when it changed in 2009, it's at the discretion of the building administrator and the classroom teacher, and that's really where it belongs. It's up to them to decide, is the activity educational appropriate, is there a purposeful need for technology, and have we worked with the kids to make sure that they understand the ramifications and what their expectations are?
As someone who has a sixth grader and a fourth grader, I can see that social norm in terms of students and parents providing a device of some kind is right in that window. There are students that are even younger that have them, but I would say when it becomes prevalent, maybe over 50% of the students is in between fourth grade and sixth grade. By sixth grade, a majority of our students have their own, you know, communication device. And a lot of times, it is used frequently for parent-student communication in addition to physical schooling.
Right after Christmas, after January, there's a large influx.
You know, and one of the bigger things is that we do continue to educate, the issues continue to go down, so it's like any problem you might have, there's always going to be those kids that test the boundaries and test the waters. Most of our kids, and the majority of our kids, do it the right, do the right thing and know how to use the, how to use their technology.
Do you review with them at any point in this, the legal, I mean, a lot of the stuff is against the law, especially the sexting and pictures, do you?
We do that at least three times a year in a big group, and we do hit it pretty hard in the beginning, and then we hit it in the beginning, in the middle, and along the way, but our, a lot of our individual meetings, and those sometimes it's after the fact, things are, people are being called in to address those issues, because it is a felony for anybody to receive or send, not to receive, but to ascend, any type of pornographic pictures.
So, yeah. The parent classes that you offer, how often are they typically done throughout the year, and what kind of outreach or announcements are made to let parents become aware?
Well, we haven't offered them this year, so that's one of the things that we are planning on doing in the spring. We talk about them at the orientation, so that's one of the things that we need to get better at as a school, and just to make sure we have more information for our parents to see. We talk at the orientation a little bit about social media and some of the effects of that, but in the same sense, those are, those venues, you're getting so much information, so to touch on just one little subject of social media, they're worried about scheduling. So, yeah, it is an area that I think we've talked about getting better at.
One kind of neat connection going on right now with this is, there's a Girls Who Code Club that meets every Monday night at the high school, and there's a lot of middle school girls and some high school girls in it, and they're making their community project on this, this cyber bullying, because there's been some girls who have been solicited online, and then parents were reporting that back to us and the police, and they decided that they're going to make that their community project to try to do some coding to make better awareness, safety process, and so hopefully, we'll be able to have that group come back and potentially report out at a board meeting, depending on how well their project goes, so.
And if you were to come into school, you'd notice that our, we have 1,200 kids walking these hallways, so it's a lot of students walking around, but if you see them coming out of the classroom, they're usually going to their devices. The bullying has calmed down a little bit, they say it's kind of crazy like that, but kids are more focused on this, trying to navigate, and for some reason, they can text, listen to the radio, and get to class without running into anybody. So it's usually, it actually has calmed a little bit of the hallway piece down a little bit, and that's, that's kind of a bonus for us.
Is it your impression that when someone gets in trouble with this, the parents had no idea what was going, what their child was doing?
Most cases...
Or most parents don't have, like you mentioned, you know?
I'll be honest, I...
I agree with you, I don't do as good a job of policing my son.
Right, well, most cases, for example, I had a situation on Friday, and I called the parent and explained it to him. So we try to educate, that's one of the things I know, we're not out to nail them and punish them, we're out to educate these kids, and the dad goes, well, I can't believe, we had this conversation, he called me back today, said he did everything you said. So, I mean, he owned it, it's, it's good when the parents can get to it, and this wasn't a, and I kept telling the parents, we need to educate, we need to educate, it's not about taking their phone away and punishing them, and we need to get that, we need to make sure they understand what they're doing is wrong. And so, yeah, that's the thing, most parents probably don't think their child is doing these things, and a lot of times, if they really had their phone, I would imagine. Another good example is, how many of you, I don't want you guys to be caught, how many people have their phone next to them at bed at night? Well, they all do. I mean, so that's one of the things we tell the parents, don't do that, but we, most, I, my kids do it, I mean, I just, but it's just, it's the alarm clock now, it's turned into their, their life, so, I mean, there's a lot of things we talk to, but I think we've changed over time, but, yeah, one of the things we would say is parents should be somewhat of aware of what's going on, and I know, it's, it's a hard one.
But how do we get those parents to be aware?
Yep.
How do we get them involved? You said, you have something you want to get...
Well, we need to do, we need to do a better job of that, too. I mean, we're all busy, so offering things at night, it's hard, but I think we just need to do a better job, from, just even from the district standpoint, of actually pushing that, communicating and letting people know, besides just with an email saying, look at these sites, you know, so.
Do you ever, like, poll current event cases around the country where kids have gotten busted and remind them that this is what happens, you go to jail, and that kind of stuff, or?
We do, and we do the big presentations, and then when we have students that violate the codes, we have to research those things, and they write things up and tell us about what they learned from that, because there's been a lot lately in the news.
Yeah.
Existence in this area, so it's, but it is good to use, and sometimes even sending them, probably sending them home to the parents, and Steve's News and Weekly Reminder would be positive.
Example?
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.
Our next discussion topic is the Seasonal Dome presentation.
I'll introduce Cam Cameron, and Cam, actually, my first memories of Cam are of him fixing the flagpole at Union School years ago as part of the, one of his Eagle Scout project, which I'm sure raised the value of that property that we sold shortly thereafter. Thank you for that improved property improvement. He approached about a year ago, or several months ago, about a concept that he's working on throughout the country, I'll let him explain a little bit more about that, but really it's about leveraging one of our existing resources, our existing assets, which is our stadium facility in terms of the turf field that we put in, and looking at ways to maximize that, and it's a trend that I think is, as I've talked with Cam and learned more about this, with the proliferation of turf and synthetic, artificial turf fields, particularly in the northern half of the country, the upper Midwest, you're seeing that communities are figuring out, these facilities cost a lot of money, they have a lot of value, they're important for their community, and they're largely dormant for a large portion of the year, and if there was a way to capture the use of that during that dormant process, that it might add values to different communities, I think Cam's found a niche out there in terms of developing that as an opportunity. So I'll turn it over to Cam and let him introduce his partner.
Sure, I'll begin. I'm Austin Cameron, I'm the president of Just Play Domes. Cam is the CEO of Just Play Domes, our father right there is Kim Cameron, he lives here in Selen just down the road. Just Play Domes is a company Cam and I started that manufactures and designs inflatable air structures, or domes. We have 125 of these domes around the world, including this one you see here, which is in Inner Mongolia, happens to be the largest inflatable dome in the world, spanning 10 football fields. And speaking of football fields, most of our domes cover athletic fields.
We have 125 domes operationally, 90% of those are involved in athletics in some way. I myself, for these two incredible turf fields that Selen High School has, after I graduated, was able to play, you know, in the alumni games, when I went to play for the University of Michigan with my former teammate here, Knox, was able to play on these fields as well with Michigan, and so I myself and current Selen students I know are very appreciative of the investment that Selen made in these particular fields. However, as Scott had mentioned, you know, four months out of the year, you're not able to use these fields, it's covered in snow, it's covered in ice. What actually happens over time to synthetic turf is that harsh winter weather will actually cause deterioration, even further from the foot traffic that takes place with athletics and other activities. And when it comes to springtime, and you have to do snow removal, ice removal, it's actually further wear and tear and deterioration. So I thought to myself, you know, I think Selen could really benefit by having an inflatable dome, and, you know, we've seen it have a really positive impact, so about a year ago, I started to speak to some of my friends here to see, okay, how would it have an impact? My good friend Dana Restrick, who's the Boys and Girls Head Soccer Coach, I asked her, I said, hey, you know, would this have a positive impact, would it be used? She said, not only with athletics, but in the community, it'd have a huge impact. And then Knox Cameron, my good friend and former teammate at Michigan, he's the director of coaching and player development here at SASSA, Selen Area Soccer Club you have here. He said the same thing, he said it would actually solve a lot of problems that we have right now in terms of lack of facilities, scheduling facilities. So I took this past year, flew out several times from Utah, where me and Austin currently reside, took measurements of the field, kind of scouted out, we've discovered, we do with domes, about what would be most beneficial to Selen. And so we propose putting an inflatable dome, seasonal dome, it would go up, you know, mid-November, come down first weekend, March or so, to get ready for spring athletics, and that would cover that stadium football field, and then they'd have access, now this is an older picture, as you see, but would have access to those locker rooms and bathrooms.
So I'll share some characteristics of this dome. It would be 360 feet wide, or long, 200 feet wide, and at its apex, 65 feet high. It's made from an extremely safe, extremely technologically advanced fabric that has an anti-UV coating, it's anti-mildew, anti-fungal, it is self-cleaning, it's completely fire-retardant, and it has a useful life of 25 years. That is further supported by our patented aluminum-grade cable harness system. That goes over the top of the fabric, and it equalizes the uplift pressures on the fabric. That creates the safest dome you could buy. It can withstand winds in excess of 150 miles an hour and snow accumulations of up to eight feet of powdery snow. Now, it's almost impossible for that much snow to accumulate without it sliding or melting off, but the dome can handle it. It is anchored in our seasonal anchoring system of reinforced grade beam concrete. As Cam said, from November to March, the dome will be up, but in the off-season, that anchoring system will be covered by artificial turf and be completely undetectable, so you won't even know that it's there.
To give you a little bit of an idea about, you know, similar projects like this around the country, what other schools have paid, you know, for projects like this from other dome companies, we have a few examples to show you. So there's North Dakota State University, similar project, these are covering football fields, soccer fields that already have turf on them, paid 1.9 million. Presentation College, South Dakota, 2.4 million. There's lots of other examples, we grabbed a few. High Velocity Sports in Michigan, Knox takes his teams there, you know, once a week to drive out there, that dome is 2.5 million. And Eastern Michigan University, their dome is 3.9 million. That particular project added in a small parking lot, small welcome center. Despite those two additions, that's just an enormously high cost for a dome. So this is what we can do for the Selen Hornet Dome. And by far, as you can see, for absolute lowest cost, we have the highest quality, safest domes, in fact, we're actually the only major dome company in the entire world's never had a failure with any of our domes worldwide. And there's a few reasons as to why we can arrive at this price, you know, that it being so low. First is very personal to me. This is my home. I went to Selen, Selen, there was a lot of good things that came, came from Selen for me when I went to school. Yeah, I want to invest in Selen, just as I did as a student, as I do now as an alumnus. So we're going to provide a significant discount to Selen for this particular project. So a lot of our dome package that we do around the world, we're going to do at cost for a majority of these items.
Yeah. We also have patented technology that enables us to have cost savings at every level of the dome process. We're extremely efficient, from the design to the actual fabrication, to the operations and installation of the dome, we have cost savings at every other level that other manufacturers do not. One example is that our anchoring system, which you saw, is $50 cheaper to install than the manufacturer that did the Eastern University of Michigan dome. And so that's just one area in that installation that we enable cost savings that others cannot achieve. Lastly, the Just Play Dome mission. Cam and I are determined to have Just Play Domes be more than just selling domes. As Cam said, we're very invested in the community. We want to make these domes accessible to communities and schools, and as you saw from the price points from other manufacturers, that makes it, it's not affordable to many of the schools that we speak with, and so that's a big part of our mission. Beyond that, we want to have an even broader impact. A portion of every sale of our dome goes towards Footsteps for Africa, which is a nonprofit organization I started six years ago, which serves orphans and vulnerable children in Southern Africa, and these children are at constant risk of rape and abuse. We're planning our next trip to Namibia, where we're going to build a school, and Just Play Domes will directly fund that. And this picture is of children at an orphanage in Victoria Falls, Zimbabwe, that we visited a few years ago and delivered supplies.
Like this picture here, Austin here, if you can't see him. I hope it gives you a little bit of a sense about just how passionate we are in terms of making a difference, a positive impact in the communities that we love. I'd like to share with you another piece that's, you know, a huge benefit for this particular project, especially for Selen and the community, Scott touched on it a little bit. There's a tremendous opportunity for revenue generation for the dome. So I spoke with Scott a bit about, other than school activities during school hours, a few hours after school, potential revenue generating hours beyond school activities, and then on weekends, during the winter break, when students are out of school, we came up with projected rental revenue of over half dollars. And a few slides ago, you saw total cost of a project, means you could pay this off within three years. And then for the next 20-plus years of useful life, you just have a significant revenue generation opportunity, tremendous opportunity that could go a long way in terms of the general fund, a number of initiatives. 41% of the rental available hours are actually already covered. Knox has 23 SASSA soccer teams, boys and girls of varying ages, are committed to practice two to three times a week. I also have a couple other teammates, they run two separate clubs in the Ann Arbor area, were already interested as well, and when I was speaking to them a little bit about, if there was a facility you could potentially use, would you be interested? They said, we'd come in our club right now. I said, you actually don't have a number, the number of hours, actually, you'd end up having to turn people away. And so it's a tremendous opportunity in terms of revenue generation. I'd like Knox to talk a little bit about, you know, some of the challenges you've had with scheduling, lack of, some of the parents' feedback that you've had as well.
Sure. Good evening, folks. Knox Cameron, who's much skinnier then, and we are not related. I'm the director of coaching at SASSA. We run a very, very good program in the fall and in the spring. Where we struggle is in the indoor timeframe. And currently, you know, many parents have to drive their kids out to Canton, 30 minutes to 45 minutes, depending on where you live in the Selen area, and that's been a huge struggle for us, right? Certainly, that's taking away from the time our kids could be practicing and could be getting better, they're spending time sitting in a car, right? Convenience of the parents moving their kids around as well. Mr. Valenti had a child in the club, right, he can attest to those driving pains as well. You know, when we spoke, this would be a huge asset, not only for SASSA, but I think for all of the, the potential athletes that graduate into the high school ranks at Selen. We want to develop great soccer players, and the only way we can do so is to have them practice and practice often. And so something of this nature would be highly beneficial and would be a dream come true for me, to be quite honest.
Thanks, Knox. So to wrap up in summary, we really genuinely feel like this could be a great opportunity and really enhance the experience of all Selen area students as well as the community. students as well as the community. It will help preserve the artificial turf, which you know is planning to be replaced soon, and maximize other investments that the school districts has made, as we generate significant revenue to offset the growing cost constraints that the schools are facing. I know there's legislation proposed to eliminate some of the subsidized energy costs or the low energy bills that the school districts, I think 167 school districts, which is a 15 million total combined savings in electricity. I know that that's on the docket, that may be gone. As well as taking some pressure off the general fund for athletics and extracurriculars. It will boost the local economy by bringing in visitors to Celine who are more likely to spend money at local businesses. We will boost the local economy by using a local contractor for our foundation and for rental equipment. It's going to serve as a community event center for things like the art fairs and the science symposium and even for, or the Science Olympia, I think it's called, as well as band practice and other activities like that. And finally, Celine High School will be the first high school in the state of Michigan to have one of these domes, bringing a certain level of prestige to an already stellar reputation.
I want to thank you for just giving us some time. I understand there's other agenda items. We have a few minutes just for some questions. We're actually going to remain for the end of the meeting as well, and then can certainly, you know, take any more questions that you may have. We also have some, oh yeah, absolutely, Paul.
So how, I'm assuming blowers blow different things up?
Yes.
Do you have an idea how much electricity that costs for all those things?
We do. So there's a university, Concordia University, University of Minnesota, that the most similar project we've actually seen to Celine's for the particular size and things like that and the scope of the stadium. He said, over the course of a winter, the cost was around, and now it can fluctuate within a little bit, but around $100,000, he said, for the four winter months. And he said for them, they had a surplus of between 350 to 400,000 dollars, he said, beyond the cost.
I think their rental revenue was a little bit, or their rental hours were shorter.
They didn't have as many rental hours.
And I assume that provides a quote-unquote heat and...
It does both heat and air conditioning, not that you have the air conditioning. It actually also, yeah, improves the air quality. We actually have a pretty cool project, yeah, and the International School, Beijing. If you're just breathing the regular air in Beijing, it's the equivalent of smoking 22 cigarettes a day. Well, those kids at those particular schools, and there's military and there's, you know, a lot of, you know, kids from all over the world that are going to these schools, they can't really play outside. So they, we put up a dome there, actually then filters the air so that there's, you have monitors of really bad air outside and obviously how poor the air quality is and then having kind of the fresher inside. So we constantly have, it's not stagnant air inside the dome.
Back in the day, I played softball in a dome over in the bone. It was cold.
Setup and takedown, I guess that was one of the, no, you and I talked about it.
Absolutely. So setup is going to be, as we discussed, you know, kind of after, probably a little bit later in November, because the football team, you know, they're going to still be playing. So that second week or so in November, the first installation is normally a little bit longer, so we're about a week to 10 days, get the foundation work all in, you know, make sure it's airtight, watertight. We get through all the quality assurance checks and things like that. And then, and then takedown, kind of same thing, actually is a little bit quicker. We do first weekend, before those spring athletics get going, kind of first or second week in March. So that four month, a little bit under four month mark, when it would be up each year. Yeah.
Because it is inflatable, what are some of the safety features for the building?
So we have 50 active patents, 16 of which are just based on safety. And so some of the things that we go, the industry standards you have to adhere to is you have to be able to withstand 150 mile an hour winds, not that that's a common occurrence, and 50 pounds per square foot of snow load. So that's three to four feet of packed heavy snow if it's at. However, what happens is we actually have some automated systems that'll kind of gauge, you know, that there's the right temperature inside, that the air quality's good, and specifically as well that the pressure is okay on the inside. We have a weather system that's automated that'll detect, okay, there's a big snowstorm that's happening right now, there's pressure changes. It automatically will increase the pressure and the temperature of the dome so that you get the good shape on it and so that the snow melts, slides off, ambient heat, obviously keep it off the side, you know, the dome, there's not a whole lot of pressure on the fabric. Where you can get into trouble, and one of our big safety measures is that patented, it's called the Orthogonal Oblique Net System. So these cables that go around and act like a net. If you think about having a balloon that you just kind of taped to a table and had a fan, and the balloon's going to go back and forth and vibrate, and then you threw a couple of strings, sort of stops the vibration. But if you put an entire net, you know, for it, you're not going to get a whole lot of vibration on the fabric so that there could be any punctures or things like that, you know, if you...
Oh, no, I just wanted to add quickly on the same note, we're the only dome manufacturer to have mobile device monitoring of the dome. So on any mobile device, you can see the pressure, the temperature and the changes. And we're the only manufacturer to have that. And so that's another safety measure that you can see wherever you are, you can see the status of your dome.
Power outage, lightning hit?
Absolutely, yes. Suddenly, the power in the state of Michigan goes out for some reason, out for a long period of time. Off the grid, we always have a reserve backup system, a natural gas that'll kick on and make sure it keeps that pressure. Now, let's say someone went over and damaged that, cut the power out of the city and then went and damaged that. The way that our domes are designed, it actually would take an hour and a half for it to completely deflate. And so obviously getting people out. However, even if it came down, it's actually like a wet blanket. It's not as though it's, you push and be able to, you know, be able to get out. So...
How do you anticipate we're going to be in seasonal? What kind of support do you have to have, people running it at any time? I mean, would the institution school, should we need a certain amount of staff in there or making sure it was safe if people are in it?
Absolutely. I spoke with Scott a little bit about that, and Rex, I think, spoke with me after our meeting and was talking about, you know, we, you know, already have people on site, and some of the schools mentioned that, that we have people on site or some of the students themselves that would be able to open it up. Now, if you have, obviously, other students from other communities coming in, well, then there's the liability of having waivers, you know, signed, obviously, as you'd know of coming on your athletic fields and things like that. And so we do have the option, you know, that some are interested in having a complete hands-free approach, which is, hey, we're going to have you schedule it, we'll just let you know the times that we want our students and our community events and things like that to be in, but you manage it, you take care of it. And then, you know, we just receive a check at the end of the month, I think. And so we have both particular options, but some like to be a little more hands-on of saying, you know, we'd like to, you know, really have it for our school activities at this time, this for the community, and then we'll figure out the rental hours.
You mentioned the, put me on the setup and takedown. What kind of cost is that every year? Do you guys do it or is Rex going to do it?
So actually, yeah, we do a lot of training. Rex asked me about this. He said, you know, can you kind of train us? So, yeah, for the first go-around, you know, putting it up or taking it down, whatever, or comfortable with, we have, you know, kind of training on site of, okay, this is exactly how it's put up. You know, if you think about a car and an owner's manual, I mean, it will always be available, obviously. You know, we have kind of a service 24 hours a day if you need it. But, you know, we have a manual, general maintenance, if there's ever, what's nice about our inflation system and things like that is that it actually will detect, kind of like a printer that gets damaged, and it says, well, open up this compartment and, you know, take this piece of paper that's jammed out. It actually will tell you if there's any troubleshooting that needs to take place. And so, yeah, there's training about how to put it up, how to take it down.
So you don't come back to do it then?
Yeah, I'll mention that there are various options. That's one of the areas that we make sure is at cost. So if you want us to come in and take down the dome, there's a lot of manpower needed just rolling out the sections. The dome will be in five sections, they're really heavy. And so we just have manpower, we get football players and some athletes and students to just roll out the dome. And you know, you really only need one onsite manager to know really what they're doing, and then you have just people to help to roll out the pieces. And if you want to bring someone in, you could have an onsite manager, and that would be at cost if you wanted to do that. Or you can bring an entire crew for $40,000 and do it that way. We spoke to the AD at Concordia University, they've been doing it on their own, but he said, I think we might want to have people come just because it can be a task. But it's, but there's those options. So that's why we, in order to be very cost-conscious and to give options for where school districts want to go, it can be completely hands-off, you want to pay everyone to do it, or we'll train you how to do it so that on an ongoing basis, it could be zero.
How much storage space does it take to store during the summer? Does it fold up into 10 by 10?
Absolutely. Yeah, the, yeah, it's by design, especially for the seasonal domes. You know, we do permanent ones that, well, that are up 365 days a year, and you just have one piece of fabric if you need it. But we do those sections to make it a lot easier to fold and to store. For the entirety of, you know, those particular things, lights, you know, suspended lights, fabric, cables, things like that, probably two shipping containers is what it would fit. Now, those, those can be stored offsite, I even spoke with Scott and like, some, some places get creative and they want to have the shipping containers and paint them and decorate them and have them on-site for things like that. But about two 40, really 40-foot-long shipping containers is what would fit the entire dome, so...
Cam, you're familiar with the EMU Dome?
Yes.
That recently failed.
Collapsed.
Yeah.
Yep.
Do you know?
I found out.
What was that, what was the cause of that? And have you had any of your domes fail?
It's a great question. I actually wrote to Scott, because I found out about an hour and a half after it happened. So I got right on, I remember, I found out from one of my friends who, because I think there was a soccer game going on, something like that. I was in Utah, found out about it, texted one of my old coaches, and he's like, yeah, I went over there in the dome, it split from one end to the other.
Right.
So there's a number of factors that go into our safety measures. One of those was talking about the wind and the way that you have the cable harness around the fabric. Because what happens is if you have pressure changes outside and you need to increase the pressure a little bit, there's going to be a little bit of pressure on the fabric, you know, with those cables. So every other dome manufacturer I've seen has only, you know, between half a dozen cables over the entire dome. So what happens is you get really oddly shaped sections in the dome when the pressure is really high. It puts a lot of friction on that fabric, especially if there's any vibration. What's going to happen over time with lots of vibration is that you potentially can have a split in that fabric, and that's what took place. It had split width-wise from one end to the other. And some of those people said, man, I heard these popping noises, it was a little bit scary. And then the dome was on the ground in three minutes. And that's what, you know, I was shocked about. We're talking to our engineering department, who said, even if there was a tornado and we had a 20-foot piece of metal that went and punctured the dome, it's isolated because of our cable net system, and still it would take, with pressure changes, it would still take over an hour and a half to get to the ground.
And to answer your question, we are the only major dome manufacturer to never have a failure. We have pictures on the slide to show you a bunch of failures, including the EMU one, that it just wasn't designed properly, it was, it wasn't maintained properly, the inflation was too high, and the pressure stretched the fabric. And so we, we've been very thorough in kind of vetting out the best practices and the, and the gotchas of these domes. And we are the only ones to never have a major failure because of that, because we were very, very thorough in our engineering and how we set it up and in that mobile monitoring, that's part of it, just so we can make sure we cover all our bases to, to know the status of the dome at all times. It took two weeks and a committee to figure out what happened because they didn't know what happened. They weren't quite sure, and it took two weeks for EMU to figure it out. And we are a little more on the ball, we know what's going on with our domes.
And unfortunately, it was, it was put up, I think, in 2010. And that actually wasn't the first collapse. They actually had a previous one, a year later, 2011, they had a couple. So there's, there's a number of factors going to a collapse, you know, a lot of that friction. So you have to have some of those safety measures in, as well as some automated monitoring systems. We certainly, you certainly always have the manual in place, just in case, you know, something takes place. But, yeah, there's, there's just to make sure it's, safety is the absolute key, which is why the majority of our, you know, patents are just on the safety measures.
I'm sure your company has a warranty on this. What kind of warranty do you give?
It's a 15-year warranty that we have on our, on our domes.
That's the industry standard for pretty much all, all of the domes, it's 15 years.
But, yeah, the, yeah, with 25, you know, to 30-year useful lives, even sometimes even, even beyond.
Yeah, with seasonal use, it can extend, as long as it's stored properly, there's not moisture to have deterioration, it can last longer.
All right.
Thank you. Yeah, I know you have other items. We'll be sticking around, so just in cases.
This is just a quick information, people. We'll put these, you have those in your packet, we'll put these on the, near the back, just for anyone that would like an information sheet.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And I have a motion to approve the recommendation to vote for Dale Windberg to run for the Michigan Association of School Board's Board of Directors from Region 7.
Support.
And a discussion. I know there were three bios in our packets this week about candidates for this position. I, I think they're all qualified. I think Dale seems to have some good skills.
David Pray was a longtime superintendent, actually was gone, is back there, spoke very highly of him in a recent meeting.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing non-motion carries 6-0. Kind of a motion to approve the resolution to join the Michigan Liquid Asset Fund, Plaus, Assumed Advisors, and Superintendent Warner.
So at the last board meeting, you approved that we would invest the bond proceeds in the Michigan... Forgot the name of my lab, Michigan Liquid Asset Fund. And when I started doing the paperwork to open the account, there is a resolution to join my lab. And so that, this resolution just allows us to join the fund.
No cost, right, to join?
No.
Same as close.
$25.
And they're going to be managing our bond?
PFM will be managing the bond, or will be managing the investment.
Any question? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing non-motion carries 6-0. Kind of a motion to approve the 2015, 2016 amended budget as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Warner.
Support?
Okay, in your board packet, there were amended budgets for... Well, I've never had this happen before.
Because it went off the apple, Janice?
So in your board packet, there were amended budgets for the General Fund, Food Service and Debt Fund, and then a draft bond fund. The Community Education, the capital projects and the sinking funds didn't have any significant changes, so those won't be amended until the final amendments, you know, that are due in June. So before we get into the amendment, I just wanted to revisit a little bit where we ended last year. We're about, yeah, yeah. But again, the state average is, is just under ten percent, and that has been falling over the last several years. So before we look at the total effect of the amended budget, I'm going to go through the revenues and the expenditure changes first. So on the revenue side, with the amended budget, we're adding about three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars across these various areas. The changes in local were minimal, around thirteen thousand. We're going to have about four hundred, a little over four hundred thousand from intermediate sources, and this is another restatement of the thirteen-fourteen Act eighteen. Once the ISD had completed their financial audit for fiscal year fifteen, and all of the locals had submitted their final special ed cost reports to the state, they realized that they still had an extra amount of money that could be distributed out to the districts. So we received a little over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in December for that. And then there were some adjustments to reduce that down to the four thirty-seven. We'll see additional state sources of about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand. The great majority of that is a prior year adjustment for special ed, the state reimbursement, that was around a hundred and sixty thousand, I believe. And then we also had some trig grant that came in just last month for forty thousand, some financial analysis, categorical money and things like that, and then just some drops in other areas to come to the hundred and thirty-seven. For federal sources, we're adding just under sixty thousand, that's for Title One, Two, and Three grants, and a fair amount of that is carryover money from prior years, where the money had not been spent and then carries over, but when the original budget was done, I didn't know what those amounts would be. And then those additional revenues are netted against the sale of the Hope and property. We anticipated having twenty of the lots completed over in Cypress Ridge, and we receive a little, around twenty thousand dollars per lot when they close. But when I drove through a couple of weeks ago, like I said the last time, there's six homes that are in some area of construction. So we anticipate only six homes, so we reduced that revenue stream by two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The good news is that it just moves into sixteen-seventeen, it's not gone, it just gets differed. So a net change of about three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in revenue. On the expenditure side, estimating an additional fifty-six thousand dollars in, in expenditures. We do have increased salary and benefit costs, we added a kindergarten section, so a teacher for that, another teacher at Heritage, we had a subposition in special education last year that became a permanent position this year, and then we increased a speech person from part-time to full-time. So three and a half FTE in certified staff. We also have some additional paraeducators, and then, of course, there's always staff turnover with additional retirements that came in late in the summer, you know, just staff turnover in general. Now, I did have a cushion built into the original budget for about two hundred thousand dollars, so the two sixty-six is net of that. A great majority of that difference then is a restatement of what our health savings account contributions are. What I had in the original budget was rather low, and so it's restated to what it actually should be. In the purchase services, it's a reduction of about ninety thousand dollars, and that's primarily for reduced telephone costs. As you remember, last year, we switched from our old twenty-year phone system to a voiceover IP, and so with that transition, we had additional costs, and those were the costs that I had moved forward into the original budget. With six months under our belt, and this year, I can see this, we're going to be reduced again. The supply repairs and the other costs, a reduction of about a hundred and twenty-one thousand, that is primarily for reduced utilities and fuel for the buses. We did get the December invoices in, and they were significantly lower than last year. January was certainly better than last year, February has been extremely warm up until now. So I am anticipating about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in reduced utility and bus fuel costs with, with gas down around a hundred, a dollar forty a gallon right now. And I actually saw a report today that it might be below a dollar at some point, so we'll see if that comes, comes home to roost. So when you put it all together and compare the original budget to the amended budget, you can see we had a planned use of fund balance last, in the original budget of almost a half a million dollars, that's down to a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. So we would end up with an ending fund balance of just over three point seven million, or six point seven nine percent of expenditures. So definitely an improvement over the original. With the food service, there's really not a lot of change between the revenue and expenditure figures, it was more on how they were allocated line by line. When I had prepared the original budget, we'd only been with Chartwell's for about five months, and so didn't really have a good handle on how the costs would come in. So that, that's the real adjustment there. The other thing is that with the original budget, I had anticipated a beginning fund balance from last year of two hundred and ninety-five thousand, and it actually came in at a hundred and eighty-five thousand. So you can see that the ending fund balance is, is different by about a hundred thousand. For the debt fund, we have the refunding of the two thousand two bonds last fall, and then tomorrow, we'll close on the school bond loan fund refunding, and so both of those transactions have to be recognized in the budget. Now, I will say that those kinds of transactions with fund accounting, it's not real intuitive on how they're reflected, it's different than what you would see in a normal business. So before we do the final amendment in June, I will have a meeting with Plant Moran to make sure that both of those transactions, as well as the new bond issuance, will be reflected properly on our And then I gave you a draft bond, bond, fund budget, and the revenue and the expenditure amounts, I think, are fairly close to what we'll see before the end of the school year. The draft part is really how we want to show it in the accounts. These accounts are going to be with us from now through Series Three, so we want to make sure that we're dividing up the costs in a way that is going to make sense to us. So, for example, we're, not this year, but next year, we'll be buying new buses and used buses, so we'll have a line item for each of those categories. With furnishings, I would assume that we would want to break that up by building, and that would be the same with site work, we would want to see it by building, but then we're doing the bus and parent drop-off loop, loop at Heritage and Woodland, that would probably be a separate category. We wouldn't be splitting those costs between the two schools. So we just kind of want to make sure that whatever we do is going to hold us through that whole ten years of three series. And the nice thing with New World that we didn't have with our old system is, as we go through those years, say, at the, at the end of Series One, we'll be able to pull a report that will give us all the costs for that series per line item, and then we could add Series Two and Series Three and pull a report that would show all of the costs at once. In the old system, each year was an individual report. Then looking ahead to sixteen-seventeen, I had already mentioned that we'll move that lots of revenue this year into next year, and we're kind of anticipating that most of the homes will be completed by June of twenty seventeen, or at least pretty close. So we'll have that revenue. As far as the energy costs, we did lock into a new three-year rate, we did that last year, but those rates kick in in April, and the rates are about twenty-two percent lower than our previous locked-in rates. We also just signed a contract with Waste Management for our trash removal, and the contract rate on that is about twenty percent lower than our previous rates, that kicked in on January first. And then we've had LED lights that were installed at Heritage or Exeter Harvest and the high school, and we'll be doing the Liberty Gym here probably over spring break, so we'll be recognizing some savings from those projects as well. And then the retirement rates came in just yesterday, those go into effect in October, and the basic rate dropped from twenty-five point seven eight to twenty-four point nine four percent. We haven't seen a drop in, in that retirement rate since two thousand nine, so that was rather unexpected to see a drop. The stabilization rate will increase from ten point five three to eleven point seven, that's the rate that gets passed through as revenue on state aid, they invoice us, and then we pay that equal amount to the Office of Retirement Services. And then the governor's executive budget should be out sometime this week, I think he had a thirty-day timeframe, which I believe is up on Friday, so we're anticipating seeing that. Like I said at the last board meeting, I don't really anticipate getting any new funding, but there could be some changes, you know, between categoricals and foundational ones, or, you know, just some new variables, we're not real sure.
It's like April Fool's Day in Pittsburgh.
Are there any questions?
Thank you.
I do have a question, sorry. Um, when you meet with all the other finance people in the district or in the county, are, is everyone doing pretty much around the same, or, I mean, are they all?
Um, we haven't talked about their position since the final audit. I know Mylan did really well with their final audit. I think, you know, outside of maybe Ypsilanti and Lakin, I think most are doing fairly well. They've made, you know, some, some concession changes and watch their budgets.
Thanks. All those, anybody else have any questions, I'm sorry. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing non, motion carries six zero. Thank you, Jan, that's very, very good. Discussion items, the transition to the SAT test, Assistant Superintendent Lodge.
Yeah, one, I'll kind of get started, I wanted to introduce, this was a presentation, or the basics of a presentation that Mr. Lodge and Dr. Helber made about a week or so ago, two parents at the high school. We've had a lot of discussion around the transition from the ACT, which has been provided for juniors the last several years, and now this year, with the class of two thousand seventeen, will be the redesign or the RSAT. So I wanted to talk a little bit about that transition, so that you have a clear understanding. I know a lot of parents who have juniors and sophomores in particular, who are kind of in that window, are anxious to learn about what does it mean.
Right, right. So we had a really nice turnout from parents the other night at the high school, about seventy-five people made it to the presentation, which was good. And they, and the parents asked a lot of very good questions about the SAT and the direction, and the reality is, whenever you institute a newly designed assessment, there's some growing, I don't want to say growing pains, but they really have to benchmark assessment for a number of years before they're really confident on how it plays out long term. So universities and colleges are going to have to adjust for the first several years that this assessment is given, so that they are being fair about the admissions process. And that was, that was a lot of the questioning that was going on with parents, well, how is that going to happen? So there is going to be some growing that will have to happen with this assessment. It's the redesigned SAT, and tonight, we're going to talk briefly about these four things. The changes between ACT and SAT, the attributes and benefits of the SAT college admission exam, opportunities available from Khan Academy, a personal learning tutorial, and that's, to some degree, a game changer in terms of getting students to have a method of preparation for this assessment, and support provided at the high school level that we are going to provide for our students. So to get started, why, why was the shift? So the state has always paid for the ACT to be given to our eleven-grade students, and they bid that out each year. And the bottom line is, the SAT came in with a more competitive bid. I mean, it's expensive to give these assessments, and that was one of the factors when they, when they did the bid process. It's designed to measure new standards, Common Core standards, and, and lower costs, of course. But the other part, we spoke just a minute ago about the Khan Academy, and I'll show you how that works. But that also is providing a level of support for lower-income students and looking at equity on test preparation, because what has traditionally happened is, students that get involved in test preparation companies, their, their parents often have money to send them through there. Well, the Khan Academy is a personal tutorial that students can access free when they take the assessment, and that gives a greater equity, accessibility to students who can't afford to go to a test preparation academy or, you know, to get ready for that. In terms of where is the SAT and ACT given, ACT has largely been Midwest in the middle, but the SAT covers big populations like California, New York, Texas, and, and now Michigan will move into that category. So it's really about a fifty-fifty balance in terms of population, in terms of taking the test. More states give the ACT, but in terms of population, it's about fifty-fifty. In terms of the redesign, comparing ACT and SAT, in terms of the amount of time, it's very similar. These two columns show that, a little over three hours for each test, closer to four for the SAT. Both of them have a writing component to them, and it talks a little bit about how much time is given for each subject. I'm not going to get into great depth with that. The scale has changed for, for the SAT. SAT used to be out of twenty-four hundred, now it's a sixteen hundred is the total score that you could range from, and that's why, when they establish a new scale, they're going to need to kind of benchmark this for the next several years, to see how it all plays out. A big deal, though, is no penalty. SAT used to always have a penalty for when students would guess, and that is, that is gone, and different breakdown on the different types of questions that are given on the SAT. In terms of, they talk about eight key changes, we'll go through them briefly. Words in context, trying to determine what a word means based on the context of the passage. Command of evidence, that's a big push with Common Core state standards, the idea that students need to read, and then they need to be able to pick out where that happens in the passage, what's the evidence that suggests that, versus just what's your opinion. Essays analyzing a source. The math that matters the most, this talks a lot about how, it's really about algebra and algebra two. You know, the geometry is very little, and, and the idea is that algebra skills are determined as what is most important entering college, and the workforce now, that may not be true for an architect, but in general, they've refocused on what are the math skills that are most important for students moving on past high school. Problems grounded in real-world context. And then you don't have the social studies or science component, like, there's not a separate score for science and social studies in the SAT, but there is an analysis done in the reading section with science and social studies-based text, so that's a little bit different as well. Also, there's a part where they'll have a U.S. founding document, and the students have to reflect on that. And then finally, the no penalty for guessing. So those are sort of the eight core changes to the SAT. In terms of the breakdown, this is somewhat confusing, so I'll go through it, and I'll try to explain it in an easy, easy way. So the total score of the assessment ranges between four hundred and sixteen hundred, so that's, that's the, the total score you could receive. And then it breaks it down by just reading and writing, you could get eight hundred, and math can be eight hundred. So those are the two breakdowns, they have both divided equally on that section. But then they start to break it apart in, there's an analysis in science and history and social studies, both in, there's a reading part to that and in math, and then they do these sub-score categories, and it just kind of keeps going down. And the, the nice thing about... The math that matters the most, this talks a lot about how, it's really about algebra and algebra two. You know, the geometry is very little, and the idea is that algebra skills are determined as what is most important entering college. And in the workforce now, that may not be true for an architect, but in general, they've refocused on what are the math skills that are most important for students moving on past high school. Problems grounded in real-world context. And then they don't have the social studies or science component. There's not a separate score for science and social studies in the SAT, but there is an analysis done in the reading section with science and social studies-based text. So that's a little bit different as well. Also, there's a part where they'll have a U.S. founding document, and the students have to reflect on that. And then finally, the no penalty for guessing. So those are sort of the eight core changes to the SAT. In terms of the breakdown, this is somewhat confusing, so I'll go through it, and I'll try to explain it in an easy, easy way. So the total score of the assessment ranges between 400 and 1,600. So that's the total score you could receive. And then it breaks it down by just reading and writing, you could get 800, and math can be 800. So those are the two breakdowns. They have both divided equally on that section. But then they start to break it apart in, there's an analysis in science and history and social studies, both in, there's a reading part to that and in math. And then they do these sub-score categories, and it just kind of keeps going down. And the nice thing about this is that it really does try to drill down into real specifics as to what kids are learning in the areas. It's not as vague. It's, you know, breakdown here, reading, writing, language into separate scores and math. And then even within the reading and writing, how are kids doing words in context, command of evidence? And then in the math, here's the three breakdowns for the math itself. The heart of algebra, problem solving and data analysis, and the passport to advanced math, which is largely getting into the algebra two part. And then here's sort of the grammar parts. But all that breakdown can add up to a total of 1,600. This is a nice component as well. Just like the ACT had a building of explore and plan, those were the assessments that were often given at the middle school and the ninth and 10th grade level. SAT has that progression of PSAT in ninth grade for our students and 10th grade for our students as well. So now, they will be assessed in ninth and 10th grade on the PSAT, which will be helpful in that it can build their development, especially with this Khan Academy, which we're going to talk about next. So it's this building of scores between those three, or those three years of assessments. In terms of the research that Washington County has done between ACT and SAT, is basically they're pretty similar. So we're not expecting a big drop-off, whether the students are taking the ACT or the SAT, the prediction will be that the correlation's pretty tight. Khan Academy, so let's talk a little bit about that. So how many people know Khan Academy? I mean, students know Khan Academy pretty well. But anyway, it's ultimately a series of videos and workshops that will tailor to kids' needs, and it'll be real specific based on how they score on one of these PSAT assessments. So we're going to take a look at that, what that will do for students. And that's this part of the presentation. Okay, so students are going to get a report. So we're just kind of envisioning a ninth-grade student. And that's not for this year. The only thing done this year so far is that our 11th graders took a practice assessment in the fall, a PSAT practice, and they now have a link to Khan Academy. But if we jump to our ninth graders, they'll also get this eventually, because they're going to take the PSAT in the spring, and they'll get a connector to the Khan Academy, which will allow them to basically have a personalized plan moving forward. So we're going to take a look at that. So students will get a score report, and it will give them literally a breakdown of their questions. One thing that SAT is very good at is really being transparent about what's on the assessment. They give the students all the rubrics. They give them a breakdown of the questions specifically. And then that will start to connect with Khan. So they get a dashboard. And this is all given to them online, but we also have printed reports for those students that want them as well. And then it will start to tell them, well, how are they doing? What's their percentile ranking? What are the tallies of correct and incorrect answers? And then we'll give them a detailed explanation of their current college readiness skills and actionable steps to improve on the skills required to be college-ready. So it's specifically telling them what things they need to work on and what they're doing well. And then it's going to start to connect them to Khan here. And that's this Jeff's Path to Success. So the data will connect from the PSAT into Khan Academy, and there's a linker. And so every student gets an account. And then they have practice assessments that the students can use after that in Khan. But then it, this part, I think, is slick, and I think it's actually going to be very beneficial for our students. What happens is, it tells kids their current score levels, and they have this little bar, and it says, in this case, this student is three out of four in math. It means that there's still area for growth there. And so it will just focus in on the areas that they need to grow in math, and then it will start to zero in on what they need to do. And in this case, they're saying that this student, this particular student, needs to work on heart of algebra and these specific areas. And then it gives them some practice problems, some other examples, and then it will show them how to do it if they need that as well. And this is just a sample problem from one of the math questions. And so our students, our ninth graders, will take the PSAT nine, and this will all happen in April. 10th graders will take the PSAT 10, and then all our 11th graders will take the SAT with the SA. It's also reduced testing time. Last year, students were taking the ACT and a very long battery of M-step assessments. That's been reduced down to the point where 11th graders will test eight hours less. Now, we didn't test the ninth and 10th graders, so our ninth and 10th will be assessed. But in terms of 11th grade, this is scaled way back. In terms of our schedule, here's how it's going to be delivered. April 12th, the SAT. We're still giving the work keys on April 13th, and the M-step, just for science and social studies, will be delivered on April 14. Dr. Helber and I, we're going to be meeting with 11th graders on February 16th, provide them with Khan resources to make sure that they have this and are able to go on if they live in practice. And one of the things we're still working on is, we do have an SAT preparation class at the high school that many of our students sign up for. But for those that don't, how can we make sure that we support the rest of the students that want the option of working on these practice assessments in preparation? So we're hopeful that this is a good direction in terms of the balance between whether we were giving ACT and SAT. And we'll keep working forward to help support our students as they get ready for what is still a very important assessment for their college careers. Questions?
Since it was, the state pretty much moved from the ACT to the SAT basically because of dollars. Did we sign a multi-year contract? Are we going to be faced with...
No, they don't just do it every year, so it will be...
I think it'll be three-year.
Yeah, three. And they're committed to M-step for a number of years, too. A lot of people thought that was going to be going away.
So we can give it to the ninth graders, the SAT, if by the time they get into 11th grade, it'll be back to ACT?
I mean, I would think that the state would not want to be going in that direction, because now they're investing a lot of time and energy to, you know, make this go. And they're not going to want to have our ninth graders take it, and then by the time they become 11th graders, quickly switch around. I mean, I can guarantee all of that, but I would suggest that...
How long is the ACT?
For a long period of time. I don't know exactly how many years, but...
That the state actually provided and paid for it. I thought that it was two cycles of three-year contracts.
And the effort here is to give all students a better opportunity to get into college. That relates the tension.
One of the things, our families are saying, you know, this is the state provided. The ACT is still given. I certainly think I have a rising sophomore, or if it's a junior actually, you're going to have them capable of the ACT, and then this could provide a test. So there's still options for families. It's just that the school provided one, and the one that we're going to focus on is the one the state has for us, so I, you know, I don't want to...
But there are the questions the parents had, is, you know, well, should we just make sure all our kids take the ACT? And my response to that is, if you are able to, sure, that's a good idea. But the state is wanting kids to have a better opportunity for college, and a lot of kids won't be able to take both. So universities are going to have to definitely work with the students that just take the SAT and figure out fair and equitable ways to help them get into college. Because I think some of our parents were thinking, well, my kid also doesn't take the ACT. There's no way they're going to be able to, you know, have a good advantage to get into U of M. And I just, I don't believe that. Even though they're going to have to work through the process, you know, they have to have fair and equitable ways to get the kids into school.
So my understanding is, because of this assessment, the Michigan colleges are going to be changing how they look at where they preferred the other before, and now they're kind of leaning more towards...
Well, I think the reality is, they know that they're going to have a certain percentage that are only taking the ACT. So they're going to have to be able to make sure that their admission standards are adjusting somewhat, because they're not going to be able to count on every student taking both. And even before, when we were given the ACT as the primary test, we had some students taking the SAT, but not all. And so they're going to have to figure out ways to help students get in.
And did you take both, or just the ACT?
I took just the ACT. And actually, I had a question, if that's okay. I was wondering about the SAT prep class that will be offered as a high school course. How will that change in relation to, I know when I took the ACT prep course through Celine, it was really helpful because we had a workbook, and we had an English teacher and then a math teacher. Will they use just the Khan Academy?
No, we still have an English teacher and a math teacher. But what they are, they are starting to use the Khan Academy, because what happens is, all those students that are in their class right now had a PSAT score that they were using from the fall, and they can link it directly to Khan, so that they'll help the kids practice with a real personalized approach. But then they still do take practice, SAT, workbook-type of assessments like you did when ACT was doing that. It's just now the digital element is allowing for more personalization. Whereas in the past, if you give every student the same instruction and then ask everybody to take the same practice test, now, the instruction's personalized based on what the students need, and then they still take those assessments. So it's a better way to get at what the kids need in a differentiated way.
Can I have a motion to authorize the following items as part of the consent agenda? A, approval of the irregular Board of Education meeting minutes of January 26, 2016. B, approval of the Board Policy Committee meeting minutes of January 20, 2016. C, approval of the Board Budget Committee meeting minutes of January 21, 2016. D, approval of payment of the general fund accounts payable of February 9, 2016, in the amount of $712,021.05. E, receive and file February Curriculum Finance and Human Resources reports. And F, approval of the following field trips, the FFA State Commission, Plankton. And G, approval of the recommendation of the Student reinstatement committee. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries six zero. Items on our next agenda? I know, I know we talked about it, but I don't remember what they are.
It is a work session, so we'll have a specific topic for that meeting. I do know that March is when we head off to Harvest, so remember, we're here. The next two meetings are, second meeting in March, we'll be at Harvard Television.
This is the second opportunity for anyone to give a public comment. Is anyone interested in public comment? Okay, our next meeting will be February 23rd at 6:30 p.m. here at the Liberty School Meetings Media Center. Can I have a motion to adjourn the regular Board of Education meeting on February 9, 2016 at 7:55 p.m.? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries six zero. Thank you.